Good evening, we want to start the board meeting. I'm calling a board meeting to order. Roll call please.
Trustee Dopplemore?
Present.
Trustee Ramos?
Present.
Trustee Lopez? Dr. Little? President Calhoun?
Present.
Dr. Curry?
Present.
Approval of closed session agenda?
I make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Am I like not close or am I not in?
Oh, okay. It's on the computer.
I'm not in? Hi. Mine out.
Did we receive any requests to address the Board of Trustees on closed session agenda matters?
No, but I'm still waiting for trustee Dopplemore's vote.
Oh, okay, sorry. Now do it. Now there you go. All right.
Well, thank you.
I'll ask again, were there any requests to address the Board of Trustees during closed session agenda matters?
No.
No requests were made? Are there any Compton Community College District Board of Trustees future agenda items request?
Yeah.
Trustee Andrea Ramos?
No, thank you.
Trustee Dopplemore, any future agenda request?
Yes. Do you get my permission? But I didn't see it. Um, yes, I would like to, um, just as a recommend- a recommendation, suggestion to, to add, and this information was provided in email, all the detailed information, um, to add Leslie Honorie, she is a poet. Um, add her as a suggestion, recommendation to the authors of Compton, to the authors of Compton and Voices of Compton uh, speaker series.
Trustee Lopez? Do you have any future agenda items or you want us to wait till later down?
I have nothing at the moment.
Okay. Um, for future agenda, I would like for us to recons- to reconsider on the next agenda, the dates of our meetings that was chosen as a Tuesday. I would like to see that placed on the next agenda for February. At this time, we will going to recess the closed session in accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act Government Code, Section 54950, and following an Education Code, Section 72122, to discuss or take action on the following items. Roll call.
I don't think we're, do we do a roll call there?
Okay. No. All right. All right, so we're gonna adjourn to closed session, thank you.
Trustee Dopplemore?
Present.
Trustee Lopez?
Present.
Trustee Ramos?
Present.
Dr. Little? President Calhoun?
Present. We will now have the pledges-
Student trustee Carnes?
Oh, I'm sorry, student trustee.
No. Dr. Curry?
Present.
We will now have the pledge of allegiance. Trustee Ramos, can you please read it in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reports of action taken in closed session pursuant to Government Code, Section 54857.1, nothing to report out. Need a motion for approval of open session agenda?
I make the motion.
Second.
Roll call. Thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome. That's a unanimous yes vote.
All right, at this time for recognition, we have trustee Sonia Lopez. And we would like to present our trustee Sonia Lopez. And so could, uh, anybody want to come down to the front or, all right, come on down to the front.
Please, all of the board members. Not one.
Not two. Oh, thank you. Trustee Lopez, you were board president, not one, not twice, but three times. And so we want to recognize you the same way that we recognize all of our presidents when they're outgoing. And so this say presented to Sonia Lopez in recognition of your leadership and dedication as board president from December 2020 to December 2022, Board of Trustees of Compton Community College District. We want to congratulate you on how you ran the meeting, how you kept us in order, especially me. Yeah, take that before, and so we'd like to present that to you. And, uh, thank you so much for your service. She's not going anywhere, but I don't want anybody to think she's going anywhere. But thank you so much for your service and dedication as being our president, keeping us online, especially when we had to do, uh, the agendas and also the, uh, contracts and things like that, so thank you so much. Would you like to say something?
I mean, oh, I'm grateful for your service. I've served on the board years with you, so I thank you for taking on that duty.
Yes, thank you for being, um, our president, doing that, doing this, um, past year for answering questions, even if they were like in email and in text, and also too for, um, for the e- like signing the e-board documents, that's one thing that, um, that trustee Calhoun didn't talk about, but that's also one thing I'm appreciative of you doing, so thank you so much.
Um, thank you team for acknowledging my tech support, I appreciate it. Um, thank you very much, uh, for being patient with me during these last couple of years as we were transitioning into a virtual environment and now back in person. Thank you.
Yeah, that was, that was pretty tough, going from virtual and now we're back in person. That picture. Oh, thank you. All right, now we have request to address the Board of Trustees on agenda and non-agenda item matters?
Yes. Um, we need a microphone. Let me just put mine. Some of the list. Yes, Jacqueline Barra?
Seven, okay.
Thank you. I hope you can hear me, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, my name is Jacqueline Barra. To the Compton Community College Board of Trustees, Dr. Keith Curry, faculty, visitors, community, and friends. I'm here tonight on behalf of my home-going friend, Emily Hart Holyfield. In early June of 2021, Emily Hart Holyfield asked me, would I be the chairperson to help return her name outside of the library of Compton College? And I asked her, would she mind if I asked Dr. Keith Curry and the Compton College Board, why did they not restore her name outside the library? She replied, she did not mind. On July the 27th, 2021, I mailed Dr. Keith Curry and the Compton College Board a letter inquiring why her name was not restored outside of the library. The next month, August 10th, 2021, Emily asked me to send a letter again, signed receipt. She would pay for them, and she did. Mr. Isaac Asbury wrote letters to this college, local government, all the way to the White House, still no reply in 2021. It does not take a PhD degree behind your name, a PhD behind your name, nor a DR in front of your name, to reply to anyone's letter after they confront you. We began to meet weekly at my home, and the outcome was to take to the streets with signs, flyers, banners, and protests. My word is my bond, and I do not make deals behind closed doors without witnesses. How dare you, Dr. Keith Curry, send a campus police with a gun to my home and Mr. Isaac Asbury's home nine months later, on May the 3rd, 2022, with a reply that did not justify why Emily's name was not returned outside of the college library. It is because of Emily Hart Holyfield, breakthrough of color, that you women of color, men of color, sit in those seats you are occupying tonight. She sat there with all Caucasian men. Following that, she sat there 20 years. She was a trailblazer, a trendsetter, a special educator, and a history maker for change at this very college. Poor Emily thought before she left this earth, her name would be returned outside of the library. I am like a tree planted by the river. I shall not be moved. My signs are going back on the streets, and I was not out to defeat the legalization of marijuana and cannabis. I did, I was out to defeat legalization of marijuana cannabis dispensaries in this city.
Ms. Rivera, your time is up.
Someone else want to yield their time to me, if it's okay, I'm almost finished.
Um, Margaret Moorhead?
Yes. I yield my time to Ms. Rivera.
Is that okay? I don't have very much longer. I was out to defeat the legalization of marijuana and cannabis dispensers in this city. With the help of the community, it was defeated three to one. I know a few colleges are growing that plant on their campus. And if I know that this college is going to start those classes, you will hear from me again. Now, thank you for the vote, as I understand, to return her name. But until you do, I am keeping my word to Emily. And I gave you some letters. If you care to tell me when her name is going back up there, I would appreciate it. God bless you all, and thank you for your time. That's it. Thank you.
Deborah Askew?
You started the time too early.
Good evening, my name is Deborah Askew, a resident of Compton for over 40 years, also a-
Hold on for one moment. Okay, now, there you go, thank you.
Okay. My name is Deborah Askew, a resident of Compton for over 40 years, also a graduate of Compton as well. I've been addressing the board since October 2022 regarding the declining enrollment of this campus. With the exception of the enormous buildings that are going up and the monies that's being spent. Also met with the, uh, faculty regarding the leadership of this administration and the declining and dismal dissatisfaction with this campus, with the decreasing bleak enrollment. Where are the students? They're going elsewhere. Must give something. Governor Newsom selected Compton to receive money for food disparity and money to come to the students. Anybody know about that? Forty-five colleges selected as part of the first round of Californians for all college corps? Is that being implemented? What programs do you have to increase? Doesn't sound like very much under this administration. Enrollment is declining. No effort made whatsoever to bring students. Latino population, it's not here. It's not here. They're going elsewhere. Why is that? Maybe you need to meet with faculty, like you need to, to see what they can do to help enhance the enrollment here? Or are you here just to dismantle this hospital for, I'm not hospital, I'm sorry, I came from a hospital, to dismantle this institution for other means? Thank you. Oh, 50 million you put for the residential, but you can't put Ms. Hart's name on the building? How easy was that? Thank you.
Thank you, young lady, thank you.
There's no more.
Is there, is there anyone else that did not get a chance to sign up that would like to speak?
Good evening, my name is Susan Adams, and I'm a resident of Compton. And I'm here today to support, uh, Emily Hart Holyfield's name to be on the library. And also I need to know, uh, I believe April was a month that the board or Dr. Curry decided last one is going to happen, the ceremony. However, there is no date. So we would appreciate communicating with the family members to let them know what date. That is very important. Next is the enrollment. I am, you all are accountable for our enrollment, decreased enrollment. You are. We need some progress in regard to that. Building these, uh, structures without the students doesn't make sense. So we're going to hold you accountable as to the enrollment. Looking at our surrounding colleges, we're not doing a good job. So we're not harping on you, but it is the fact we want progress in our enrollment. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, my name's Leticia Vazquez-Wolson. I'm a resident, um, a lifetime resident of the Compton Community College District, former mayor, um, in the city of Linwood, um, former council member there. I, um, am a former faculty member here at Compton College. Um, I worked for Assemblyman Mervyn Dymally during the merger. And, um, I'm here in support of the, uh, restoration of, uh, Mrs. Emily Hart Holyfield's name on that library. Uh, back in 2009, I had a conversation with Mr. Keith Curry about, um, what happened, uh, with her name and why it was removed. Uh, Mr. Keith Curry at the time, um, said that it was a direction by Sacramento. Um, and it was during that time that I had, um, a conversation also with Ms. Hart Holyfield because she was organizing the community in support of restoring the name. Um, here we are in 2023, um, her name is still not, um, back on the building. Um, again, as a resident and taxpayer, I strongly support restoring her name on the college. As has already been mentioned, uh, Ms. Hart Holyfield, um, was a history maker in our community. Um, many of you, uh, women in particular, women of color, many of us that have served in elected positions know how difficult it is to serve when you're the only one. Um, she did it during that time, and she saw the college through a number of years that, um, were very difficult. And she's, uh, through her leadership, we saw the college succeed. So, um, I am here to respectfully request that the community be given a date as to when, um, that, um, that is going to be done. And, um, uh, that, uh, that's about it for now, thank you.
Is there anyone else that didn't sign up that would like to speak before we go on to the next item?
Good evening. Bruce Boynton, I too just wanted to speak, I did not sign up because I really thought this was an issue that had been resolved. I thought that the trustees had unanimously voted that this would happen. I believe that's correct. Is there an issue? No? Yeah? Well, hopefully there isn't an issue. I too am in support of, uh, of Emily Hart Holyfield's name being restored in front of the library again. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the final act, is that the final person that would like to speak that wasn't signed up? All right, then we'll go on with the board meeting, thank you. Item 9.02, Compton Community College District Board of Trustees Future Agenda Items Request? Any board members have a future agenda item? Trustee Lopez?
Nothing to add.
Trustee Curry?
Nothing to add.
Trustee Ramos?
No, thank you.
Trustee Dopplemore? Yes, um, I have a future item, um, for, um, to have it as, as agenda item, drafting, um, the process of the next steps we're gonna, the board will take on addressing the naming, the renaming of Emily Hart Holyfield's name onto the library. And also in addition to that, um, drafting a press release of communication to the community. That's all I have, thank you.
I have no future agenda, I said mine earlier in the beginning of meeting, and Dopplemore gestated it. Thank you. So now we'll go to item 10, 10.01, minutes of December 12th, 2022, Board of Trustees Meeting. I have a motion.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion by Lopez, second by Dopplemore?
Ramos.
Ramos, sorry.
Oh, sorry, thank you. That's a unanimous yes vote.
Item 10.02, minutes of the December 17th, 2022, Board of Trustees Retreat. I have a motion.
So move.
I'll second.
Move by Ramos, second by Dopplemore, trustee Dopplemore?
Move by Ramos. Second by Doptemore. Trustee Doptemore.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Item eleven, Reports From Representatives And Employee Organizations. We have the Associate Student Government Report, Paul Benita.
No report. He had nothing to report today, so he's not going to be.
Eleven oh-two, we have Academic Center Report, Dr. Minador.
She contacted us today during the earlier meeting, said she would not be, she had nothing to report, she's not going to be in attendance.
Eleven oh-three, CCCFE Certified Employees Report, Jeanette Morella. Eleven oh-four, CCCFE. I made an error. I did not, did I make up, did I open up the last two? When I did reports from representative employees, I didn't ask for a motion? Okay, so which one are you talking about? I did not. Okay, thank you. Thank you. So we'll go to eleven oh-four, CCCFE Classified Employees Report. Mr. McKenzie. Now we're down to presentation's twelve. Well, four don't want twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two, Compton Community College District Financial Audit Report. I have a motion. In the presentation.
So we have our auditors here from Eli Bailey to provide a presentation on the audit report for twenty-one, twenty-two, which was completed in December of twenty twenty-two and submitted to the Chancellor's Office before the December thirty-first deadline.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Curry, my name is Ryan Milligan. I'm a senior manager and CPA with the firm of I'd Bailey. And we were contracted to perform the annual financial audit of Compton Community College for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The report in its entirety, it's about a hundred and eleven pages. I am not going to waste everyone's evening going over all a hundred and eleven pages. However, I'm going to go over some highlights that I believe bring the most value to you as a board. So the very first page of the audit is the independent auditors' report. This is where we give an opinion on the financial statements of the district as a whole. On the page one, on the opinions paragraph, we've given the district an unmodified opinion. That is the highest level of assurance that us as auditors are able to give, that the financial statements are free of material misstatements. The language for an unmodified opinion is in the next bullet point. It just starts off with, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly at all material aspect, the respective financial position. And then it goes on for some length. But again, unmodified opinion, that's the highest level of assurance we're able to give. Slide. After that, there's a section of the report, it's about a dozen pages, it's called the Management's Discussion Analysis. I always tell every board, if you're, if you're going to read anything, nothing else from the report, please read this section. This is where management has provided narrative to a lot of the balances. They go over some budgetary highlights, some financial highlights, and say what happened from one year to the next. Again, this was all provided by management to give context to what happened. Next slide, please. Page seventeen starts the consolidated financial statements. We say they're consolidated because they're not just the general fund. It's not just your bond fund, it's all funds of the district. It's, it's your associated students, it's your capital project outlay, your child development. Everything is all combined into one set of financial statements. These financial statements are also brought on what we call the full accrual basis of accounting, which means that we bring on balances that aren't in your funds and you don't see them in your budgets, things like capital assets, your long-term debt, your pensions, your OPEB, stuff like that. And also after the financial statements, or what we call the notes to the financial statements, and is what those will do, is take some of those bigger balances that are on those statements and give a little bit more context and a little bit break them down to give you a little bit more useful information of what makes up those big numbers that might be on the statement of net position. So just some of those big numbers I was talking about are the capital and right-to-use leased assets of one hundred and eighty, seven point five million. It's on page thirty-six if you want to get a breakdown of that. All these page numbers, they're the report page numbers, not necessarily the PDF. If you have it open, you're following along. Long-term liabilities, these are the line of credits, your bond, your compensated absences. Aggregate net OPEB liability, these are the post-employment benefits to give out to retirees, one point two million. And then lastly, the pension liability of twenty-six point three million. One of the reports that we issue, we issue a report on internal control over financial reporting to the district. This is not an opinion, it's just literally, it's just that, it's just a report. And in our audit, we did notice, we did note one financial reporting finding. It is, it is identified as finding two thousand twenty-two dash zero zero one. It's on page ninety-one. If you want to read some more context for that. Basically, this one was just, I want to say it was more of a housekeeping type finding. It had nothing to do with any type of question cost or stuff that was spent that shouldn't have been spent. Next one is the opinion on federal awards. So we perform federal audits over the federal funding that the district receives on an annual basis in accordance with the uniform guidance, which gives us, us auditors the parameters and requirements on what we need to audit, how often we have to audit it, and what our objectives are of the audit. For this last year, we've audited the HERF funding, which we're going to be audited every year until it goes away, which this will be the last year, this twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. We audited the financial aid cluster, which that's the more traditional financial aid with Pell Grants, SCOG, work-study, direct loans. And then we also did the, there was oh, what was it called? It was an emergency grant that was given from the Chancellor's Office actually in May of twenty twenty-one that we also audited. So between those three programs, we probably got close to ninety percent, if not even more coverage during an audit, which is an extremely high amount of coverage. And in those audits, we did have an enrollment reporting finding with the financial aid. Again, more information about the details that finding is found on page ninety-three. And again, this was just a back office finding. It had nothing to do with giving money to ineligible students or funds that were spent that couldn't be substantiated. It's literally just an enrollment reporting up to the Fed type finding. And then last opinion we give, it's on state compliance. So every year, this Chancellor's Office, they give us a laundry list of about fifteen to twenty different items, areas that they want us to specifically focus on. calculation of your FTS, your contact hours, looking at student eligibility for DSPS, making sure your scheduled maintenance matching requirement is done. So I'm glad to say that if you look on page ninety-five, you'll see a blank page, which means we had no findings for that area. You never get positive assurance from an auditor. That's why we're generally called negative people because we can only give negative assurance. So getting a blank page from an auditor is always a great thing to see. And then lastly, there's a summary schedule of prior year audit findings. So anytime a finding is written, we are required to follow up on that finding. It's not something, we find it one year, we just can ignore it the subsequent year. We actually do have to perform procedures to make sure that those findings are either implemented, they're in process of being implemented, or they were not implemented. So on page ninety-six, we had the findings from two thousand, two thousand twenty-one year fiscal year, of which there were two financial statement internal control findings. One of those findings was fully implemented in the current, in the twenty-one, twenty-two year. And one finding was the carryover finding, finding twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one. For federal award status, significant progress was made over here. Last year, in the twenty-one fiscal year audit, we had five federal findings. Of those five, four were fully implemented, one was partially implemented. And so which means progress was made in that one final area in the twenty-two fiscal year. And then lastly, state compliance, there were no findings this year, no findings last year, therefore there was nothing to follow up on. Any questions?
Does any board members have any questions? Trustee Lopez?
No questions.
Trustee Ramos?
No questions. Thank you for the summary.
Trustee Doptemore?
Yes, again, thank you so very much for your overview. I really like how, in your response, how you broke it down. And what you were telling us, what you saw, you also gave the results as well as the recommendation. So that made it very easy to follow along. So again, thank you so very much for that.
You're very welcome.
And I read the report too. My eyes were crossed.
Mine do too sometimes.
Yeah, but I asked Dr. Curry my questions and he was able to answer them. So I thank you for this in-depth report, especially about, you know, our finances and being audited.
Yes.
And it's very important that when you're audited, that you get all the details and the information so that you know what's right and what's wrong and what you need to fix.
Right.
And things like that. So thank you.
And one thing I do want to add is there is a perception, this is a fiscal audit, this is actually a district-wide audit. We deal a lot with student services, human resources, instruction departments. This literally is a district-wide effort for this audit report to come together. And everybody at the district that we've encountered during our audit has been very helpful. No roadblocks, no, no anything. It, which is actually, as an auditor, it's very refreshing to come across sometime. Thank you.
Thank you. Item twelve oh-two, Compton College Oliver W. Connor Promise Program.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Can you all hear me? Okay, perfect. My name is Nelly Alvarado. I am the Director of Educational Partnerships here at the college and I'll be presenting on the Oliver W. Connor College Promise Program. These are the items that we will review today. The benefits of the promise program, eligibility, fees and cost, the twenty-two, twenty-three applicants, demographics and success, outreach for the twenty-three cohort, next steps, and a student success story. Next slide. So some of the benefits for the promise program include guaranteed admission. Students have waived enrollment fees for the first two years if they enroll in twelve or more units at census. We do provide students with a four hundred dollar book voucher and they're eligible to receive a free laptop. So they're able to get it on loan for the first year. And if they enroll in the third consecutive semester, the following fall, they're able to keep that laptop. They're able to receive services through the Compton College Graduate Advantage Program, which guarantees students' admission to UC Irvine through the transfer admission guarantee. We assist students completing the steps to enrollment. They're able to receive priority registration, receive support services from other programs such as FYE and our Extended Opportunity Programs and Services, financial aid, summer bridge, and early college and career planning. And the two and through pledge, which is working with middle school students and their parents. Next slide. So we currently have memorandums of understanding with Compton Unified, Linwood, and Paramount serving a total of thirteen schools. Next slide. For eligibility, students must complete the steps to enrollment, which include applying for financial aid or the California Dream Act application, submit a Compton College, a Compton Promise application, apply to support, support programs such as AOPS and FYE, enroll in twelve units, and maintain a minimum of two point oh GPA or complete at least sixty-seven percent of courses attempted each semester. Next slide. For fees and cost, this is a breakdown of the fees that a non-promised student would have to pay, which is a little over three thousand eight hundred. And promised students only pay approximately a hundred and forty-eight, saving over thirty-six hundred dollars a year. Next slide. For the Fall Twenty-Two applicants, this is a breakdown of applicants by district. You're able to see the cohort, cohort beginning twenty nineteen all the way to twenty twenty-two. They're coded or color-coded by district, so the, the blue represents Linwood. Red Paramount, Compton is in green, and the purple is unknown. Next slide. This is eligibility by type, so you will see the students that enroll in twelve units, students that enrolled in less than twelve units, and then students who did not enroll. Next slide. For demographics and success, you'll be able to see a breakdown of female applicants by gender. And currently, females are enrolling at fifty-six percent and males at thirty-eight. And for ethnicity, it is eighty-five percent Latinx and twelve percent black or African-American. Next slide. So this is for success and retention rates. What you're able to see here is a comparison of promised students with non-promised students. In this specific example, non-college, non-college promised students are, their success is a little bit higher than promised students. But then promised students, their retention is higher than the non-promised students. And then just as a reminder, success is that the student completed a course with a passing grade. And then retention is that the student did not withdraw or have an excuse withdrawal for that term. Next slide. At this time, our, our sample population, our groups are too small to do a disproportionate impact analysis. So we're hoping that as the cohorts grow, that we're able to do this in the future. Next slide. Now, what we're working on is, we're currently continuing to accept students that graduated beginning in twenty nineteen. We sent out an acceptance letter on behalf of the president CEO to over four thousand six hundred seniors. We continue to help students with the steps to enrollment by offering workshops. Next slide. And then what we're currently working on is doing in-person and virtual steps to enrollment workshops. And that it also includes workshops with our financial aid office and our EOP and S and care department. We're working on Senior Day and we tentatively have it scheduled for March twenty-ninth. We're preparing a mailer to be sent out to all seniors from, from our partner school districts, working on Community Day on April twenty-second, and a resolution to expand the promised program for all first-time college students who enroll at Compton College. Next slide. We do have our success story, Majesty Goodlow. She graduated from Compton College and received three associate degrees and transferred to Cal State Dominguez Hills in Spring twenty-two. Yes. She, she did very well. And I'll take any questions.
Does any board member have any questions? Trustee Lopez?
No questions. Thank you for your report.
I have a question. Has the enrollment increased with this program?
It has remained steady. We do see students apply. And what we'll see is that the part where we struggle a little bit is enrolling in the twelve units. So even, they're not part of the program, but they're at Compton. And specifically for the promise program, we're looking at twelve or more units.
So you believe it's the twelve units is the issue?
I mean, it could be. Yes.
Okay, so if that is an issue, do you think later on you guys will try to change that issue, like that situation to make it maybe less so people can be a part of it in general?
Student trustee, I wanted just to jump in on this one, and I mentioned to the Board of Trustees about this earlier today, is that we're in a process right now of revising our promise agreement and looking at a promise resolution to come in front of the Board of Trustees and revise it to include a couple of different options, but also to address the part-time student as well. and revise it to include a couple of different options, but also to address the part-time student as well. And so our goal is within the next two months to get that completed and bring the resolution back to the Board for approval to expand our promise program, but taking into account first-time students who are from outside our district and also the part-time versus full-time issue. But we do think that that is one of the barriers for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Curry.
Trustee Ramos?
No questions. Thank you for the report, presentation.
Trustee Doppler.
Yes, again, thank you so very much for the report. I just want to, just to expand a little bit on your, on your presentation. So you mentioned the laptop and, and the tablet. Would, do we also provide, I'm, I'm speaking about the connectivity. We also provide hotspots to the students this one?
Yes.
Okay.
But the one that they're able to keep is the laptop, the Wi-Fi hotspot after the, the year. They'll have to, either if, if they continue enrollment, then they're able to renew it. But they're able to physically keep that laptop.
And there's no additional cost to the student for the hotspot, correct?
No.
Is that right? Okay. I just wanted to confirm that. And also, just something else. At what point do you begin the onboarding process for our students? So I'm really thinking about the summer bridge. When do we actually start engaging with them? If you can elaborate on that a little bit for me?
Yeah, so for summer bridge, that starts as soon as the students start the application process. So what we currently do is when the student schedules an appointment with the counselor for the ad plan, they also do the intake for summer bridge. And that's how we're able to, that's how they know that we have summer bridge available for them and for them to participate for follow-up.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Alvarado. That's all I have. Thank you so very much.
No questions at this time. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Item twelve point oh three, Compton College Professional Development.
Yes, so tonight we have Pilar Huffman, who is our Professional Development Manager for Compton College, providing a presentation to the Board of Trustees regards to present, to our professional development, leading through learning. Pilar.
Thank you, Dr. Curry, and good evening, board members. I'm excited to be here. My name is Pilar Huffman, and I'm honored to serve as the Professional Development Manager here at Compton College. Next slide, please. This update is to provide you with details on why professional development is important. Throughout the presentation, I will refer to it as PD. I will provide a PD overview, creating a culture of diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility, and then next steps. Next slide, please. Why is PD important? Well, most importantly, to align with the completion by design, meaning we align with the twenty-two, twenty-three objective to create a stronger connection to the community, the college, the students, and the employees as a family here at Compton College. And to do that, professional development offers ongoing opportunities, resources, and tools for faculty, classified professionals, and administrators to be their best for our students. Next slide, please. A professional development overview. How do we do this? Well, we started back in twenty nineteen when we hired myself, the PD manager, and began a PD development program at the college. We also utilize data from the Professional Development Needs Survey and Workshop Surveys to inform professional learning efforts. We also prioritize teaching and learning and data competency through ongoing partnerships. For example, with our partnership with Achieving the Dream, we are able to do this. We also establish campus-wide engagement through a professional learning and engagement committee. And we also have supporting committees through our Faculty Development Committee, our Classified Development Committee, and our Management Development Committee. Again, we have continuous professional learning opportunities, which are available for every employee, faculty, classified staff, and administrators. And most importantly, we cultivate a caring and supportive learning culture that empowers our employees to grow. Next slide, please. How do we provide these opportunities? Well, once again, they're ongoing, so we are revitalizing PD all the time. We do this by leveraging our partnerships with Achieving the Dream to support professional learning. We also have a calendar that is updated every academic year. And again, this is supported by data and shared governance across campus. And then we have an amazing system known as the Vision Resource Center that is powered through Cornerstone. And this is a professional learning tool that all employees have access to to engage in on-demand webinar training. Next slide, please. To talk about the specifics of measuring the effectiveness of PD, we do do this through two components. We have PD needs surveys, and we also have workshop surveys. So data collection happens when we do a PD needs assessment survey on an annual basis, primarily in spring. And we do this to understand and prioritize the needs of our employees. We also have ongoing focus groups, and that creates the shared governance component, where these focus groups allow employees to share out in qualitative data discussions. We also offer workshop surveys, whereas each employee who participates in a workshop, they're able to take a survey and provide assessment of their experience. And based upon the data, we use that to develop ongoing professional development activities. Next slide, please. Measuring PD's success, the outcomes are our opportunities. So what you see before you are a lot of the opportunities that have been offered and are going to be continued to be offered throughout the academic year. You'll also note that we have listed specific areas. So culturally responsive teaching and learning in and out of the classroom, technology, student support and engagement, instructional effectiveness, and personal and professional growth. Next slide, please. What you see in front of you shows that according to the respondents who have taken some of the workshop surveys that I mentioned earlier, for example, in our Title IX Training, sixty-nine percent of those respondents who took the survey, sixty-nine percent stated that this provided critical knowledge to their job, and they strongly agreed that they enjoyed the workshop. So I brought up these two measurements just to show you that these are strongly agreeing. Employees who are in professional development who take the surveys do agree that they like what they're learning and that they do provide knowledge in these workshops. Next slide, please. Another component, and one of our main components, is to create a culture of diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. This is important because this is how we structure student success. So in PD, our equity framework is based upon this. Inclusive practices, collaboration, engagement, and using an equity lens in all of our training and development measures here at our college. Next slide, please. This data shows that diversity, equity, and inclusion and accessibility training opportunities are out here for our employees. In fall of twenty-two, all of these workshops, what you see is equity is in burgundy or maroon, in gray accessibility and technology training, and then in yellow culturally responsive. Every month, we were committed to offering some sort of training in these key areas. And this is what we do on a routine basis. Next slide, please. PD highlights. I'm excited because we have invested, thank you to Dr. Curry, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in faculty teaching and learning projects. That is major, and we do this to incorporate the employee voice. So faculty have the opportunity to provide their input and leadership in developing training that they get to engage in for teaching and learning practice. Also, we have created Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Accessibility Week. That means we take the time out to recognize and appreciate culture in a whole different way, and we incorporate students into this activity. Also, we have Classified Development Week. This is another exciting event. This used to be a one-day event, but now it's a full week where classified employees are a part of the learning process, where they actually facilitate the training on our campus. We also offer a Leadership Academy for classified employees. This has been great. This is going to be our third year in doing this. And I can attest, this is another great experience that employees are able to participate in. We also prioritize mental health and wellness opportunities at our campus, meaning that we prioritize our employees' health. I myself have made it a priority to do so. We actually have a newsletter that I will send out throughout the course of the semester, every Monday. We call it Mindfulness Monday. Also, we have allyship training. This is another opportunity to talk about the allyships that we have on our campus and making sure that we engage in culturally responsive conversations. This is just fall and some of the things that we've done previously, but this is what we continue to do. So I do want to highlight that this is not just a one-time thing. This is just an example of what we do here at our, our campus. I think it's wonderful. Next slide, please. Next steps. All right, so for our next coming semester, these are some of the highlights that I wanted to talk about. We have our upcoming Black and Males of Color Summit. And I believe that this is going to be a great event. We've done this virtually in the past. And I believe that we're basing this on COVID, so we hope to continue to expand upon that. We also will be engaged in Restorative Justice Practices Workshop. And this is the series for not only faculty, but classified employees and administrators. We will have data chats partnering with our wonderful team in institutional effectiveness, and we also customer service training. Now imagine that here at our campus, we have ongoing training, not just campus-wide, but we do it in different departments as well. And then finally, I'm proud to say that we support our employees and their academic success as well. We offer a graduate support group for every employee where in which they get actual support in their academic journey. Next slide. And with that, are there any questions?
Does any trustee have any questions to ask? Trustee Lopez? Okay.
I don't have a report, but it was great.
Trustee Lopez?
Yes, thank you for the report.
Trustee Ramos?
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Trustee Doppler.
No question. I just have a comment. Thank you so very much for putting the, the different variety of, in segments of training that's offered throughout the academic year. So we're really investing in the mind, body, and spirit of our faculty and staff. So thank you so very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that report. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we are on item thirteen, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion?
Moved for Consent Agenda, item number thirteen.
You have a second?
No second.
It's been moved?
Oh, I'm, I'm going to step out because for thirteen point zero A, it's a, I'm employed by AT&amp;T, and it's a conflict of interest, so I'm gonna remove myself to not be a part of the discussion.
Do you want to disperse?
Can I make a recommendation? Trustee Board President, Kehon, since that has to be done, I think what you could do is you could move that item out of consent, and then the Board could take action on all the consent items except AT&amp;T. And then at that point, Trustee Ramos will step out if there's a discussion and to take action on that item. So that means able to participate in an entire consent conversation.
Would you agree?
I withdraw my motion. And so I put forward the motion to vote on items, to remove item thirteen point zero eight from Consent Agenda and vote on thirteen point zero one through thirteen point seventeen, except for thirteen point zero eight.
May I have a second? Is there any discussion? Trustee Lopez?
No discussion.
Trustee Collins?
No discussion.
Trustee Doppler. Did not put anything. I just want to make sure. Just want to make sure. All right. Roll call for the vote?
An edit to your remarks, Soviet, should be, oh, there you go.
Please vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Okay, so Trustee Ramos is gonna step out. May I have a?
Have a motion to move item thirteen point zero eight.
Your second?
No second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call for the vote, please, Ms. Dilly.
The motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Chancellor. Somebody get Trustee Ramos's force, please. Thank you. Red item fourteen, action items. May I have a motion? Oh, that's right. All right. Learning. Item fourteen oh one, Board of Trustees, Vice President Position.
May I provide some background to this one?
Yes.
Board President, Kehon, at the last board meeting, the Board of Trustees, trustee Doppler asked for the, for the Board to reconsider or to have a conversation about the Vice President Position. And so that's why he placed on agenda, so the Board can discuss and/or take action regards to the Vice President Position. And trustee Doppler, if you want to add anything, you may.
Yes, thank you, Board President and Dr. Curry. For this agenda item, I know I did originally ask for the Board to reconsider. But tonight, what I'm doing is I would like to withdraw my request to reconsider this agenda item.
I have a clarifying question then. Given that it's already an action item, we do have to take an action. So is the action to have her remain, does a motion have to go before to state she needs to remain Vice President? Because there's a motion and an action that needs to be taken, correct?
That was gonna be my question.
If the Board takes no action on this item, then trustee Doppler remains as the Vice President of the Board.
Okay, so there's no roll call?
Yeah.
We just say no act-
It's an action. It's an action item. If the Board wants to take action on this, to move forward, to do, to do election again, you can. If there's no action, just the Board can say there's no action and move forward with the agenda.
Okay, but it's not a motion, it is not a second, and it's not a roll call.
No, we'd have, we'd have not done a motion. I just gave, I just gave the background to it.
I want to make sure. Okay.
And then for the minutes, we just say that there was no action taken.
Okay. So here in that, trustee Doppler has decided to remain as the Vice President. So there's no action need to be taken.
Correct, because the Board voted at the last board meeting regards to the election. And so the question was to be reconsidered. And so the, for the action item, it was to discuss and/or take action. The Board discussed. I don't think there's a motion to take action or to nominate, so then the Board would have no action.
I don't know if I asked for discussion. I did.
I just brought it forward, the, I, I brought, I brought forward the background to the item.
Did I ask for discussion? Was there any discussion? Because you don't need one. Okay, so there's nothing we need to do, correct? I just want to make sure. All right. So now we go to fourteen oh two. Board of Trustees Clerk Position.
Can I give my background on that one? I said, can I give my background on that one? So my my difficulty is given the new date of the meeting, I'm coming, I I'm gonna be stuck in traffic and be late. So being clerk might require me to lead a board meeting, and if I'm not here, I just don't want that responsibility after three years of presidency, trying to get past all the torch.
You lost me. Did you say because you'll be late?
Want to pass on the torch of leadership to other people.
Okay, all right. So now we need a motion to nominate somebody for the clerk? All right. So I need a mo- a motion to nominate someone for the clerk?
I think my only concern is that we don't have all five of us, and I don't know if trustee Ramos is available and willing to take the nomination.
I'm I'm fine with that.
Great. I nominate trustee Ramos.
Is there a second? We have we have to ask.
And I second.
We have to ask.
And I second I second trustee Ramos as as clerk.
So there's a motion, there's a second, and we have the electronic vote, please.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Thank you. Fourteen oh three. Administrative Services, Los Angeles County of Education. Laco Certification of Signature.
Yeah, I just have one correction. So the there's a reason why this item was after the other two items. So there's a correction. So if we could correct trustee Lopez's name with I'll just change it with Andres Ramos. And then the we request the board's approval with the correction of Andres Ramos as a clerk.
So that's a motion?
That's just a I'm I'm asking to correct it and then so for someone to make a motion.
I move the motion for Administrative Services, Los Angeles County Office of Education Certification Signatures with the modification to remove Sonia Lopez and update Andres Ramos as clerk.
Your second?
Second.
Rule, electronic roll call, vote, please.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Item fourteen oh four, Administrative Services. Count and Community College District Resolution Number zero one dash one seven dash twenty twenty three A. Budget Argumentations for the Fiscal Year twenty twenty two through twenty twenty three.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ramos, second by Lopez. Electronic vote. Move discussion. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, discussion. Maybe we have the roll call vote, electronic.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Item fourteen oh five, Administrative Services. Count and Community College. District Resolution Number zero one seventeen twenty twenty three B. Budget Transfers for the Fiscal Year twenty twenty two through twenty twenty three. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion by Ramos, second by Doplemore. Maybe we have the electronic vote. Discussion? Discussion? Maybe we have the electronic vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen oh seven, Facilities Planning and Development. Contracts over a hundred and nine thousand three hundred. Mark Anderson Architects, Inc. DVA, RIM Architects and
Six. You skipped six.
I did skip six. Returning, thank you. Fourteen oh six. Administrative Services Contracts over with two no no wonder, a hundred and nine thousand three hundred Amendment. Ed Eady Bailey, formerly okay. Varnett Trine Day and Company LLC. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ramos, second by Lopez. Maybe we have the electronic vote. Discussion? Oh, discussion, thank you. I'm gonna get it, Joe. Is there any discussion on this item? No discussion. Maybe we have electronic vote. Thank you, trustee Lopez.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Item fourteen oh seven. Facilities Planning and Development. Contracts over a hundred and nine thousand three hundred. Mark Anderson Architects, Inc. DVA Pacific RIM Architects and Callie Cass. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second, there's a second?
My second.
Discussion? Hearing no discussion, maybe we have the electronic vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen oh eight. Facilities Planning and Development. Contracts over a hundred and nine thousand three hundred Amendment. Atlas Uni- Unit United. Okay. Heidler Inspection Group. May I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
No second.
Motion by Ramos, second by Doppler. Discussion? No discussion, maybe we have electronic vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Fourteen oh nine. Facilities Planning and Development. Contracts over a hundred and nine thousand three hundred. Amendment Construction Specialists. Specialists. C S and Associates, Inc. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ramos, second by Lopez. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, maybe we have the electronic vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Item fourteen ten. Facilities Planning and Development Contracts over a hundred and nine thousand three hundred. Amendment. Zestia Education Construction Insurance Student Services Building. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ramos, second by Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, maybe we have the electronic vote?
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Item fourteen eleven. Facilities Planning and Development. Contracts over a hundred and nine thousand three hundred Amendment. The Hill Partnership Doing Business as HPI Architect Student Housing Project. May I have a motion, please?
I have a motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Doplemore, second by Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, maybe we have the electronic vote? All right, Sylvia. All right. Before we go to fifteen, I forgot to notify everybody. On the consent agenda, there were questions that I gave to Dr. Curry that they answered. And they were outside there on the table. If anybody wanted to get a copy of the questions that I asked and were answered. I'm sorry that I didn't say it at first.
No, I I I just need clarification because I I'm not seeing it on my screen. But I'm seeing it there. Doesn't the student trustee get a vote?
Yep.
Yeah, it's not here.
She wasn't present at roll call. We didn't go back and do a roll call when she came back, when she came in.
Showing yourself, honey.
I I just caught it because I-
Yeah, I see.
Yeah. That's it.
Oh, okay. She just joined the meeting. All right. So now we are at fifteen, discussion, action. Then I will turn it over to Dr. Curry.
Thank you. So the first item in the discussion action agenda, we the first item in this discussion action agenda is the legislative meetings. As most people are aware, the Board of Trustees and myself will be in Sacramento in about two weeks. Talking about legislative priorities. And what we have done, and actually, I don't want to take credit for this, Heather Parnak is in the back. So each year, we update our advocacy handbook, which is in your packet. We also updated our priorities for this year. So if you can open up a attachment to Heather, that'd be great. So we tried to, we sent an email to the Board of Trustees last month and also reminded this month regarding to potential items that we want to allocate for. And so these are some of the items that we have for this year for for advocacy. One is to request additional funds, additional state revenues to support students and equitable access to books and materials. Looking for some more support regards to implementation of open educational resources. As most people are aware, Cal State College's goal is to be eighty-five to a hundred percent with OER by fall of twenty 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 thirty-five. Continue to support retention and enrollment strategies. In the governor's budget proposal, it included about two hundred million dollars for enrollment. Enrollment and, I'm sorry, enrollment and retention funding for enrollment, retention and enrollment strategy, sorry. And so what we asked for was for that money to be ongoing. And the reason why we want to support that is because there's a lot of activities we're using that we're doing that's funded from one-time money, which we have five years to spend. But with the enrollment decline throughout the state, we feel it's more important to have that money ongoing so that you can be able to have more permanent staff that are doing this type of work. Continue to support housing money for California community colleges. We also looking at some additional things, looking at request additional money to offset the additional additional pension and instructional costs. And then we also are asking for the twelve point two million dollars to build a permanent student health center on Cal State College campus in partnership with St. John's. We're also going to ask again for the additional five point two million dollars for our visual performing arts complex, which we have shared last year with the state legislators as well. This issue has to do with the soil and the issues that we have to resolve as race to that. We also are requesting additional funding from student equity achievement. As you note in the governor's proposal, they included eight point one three percent COLA for the general fund dollars. But then also they included for some categoricals, except for the student equity achievement. And so one of the areas is to have additional support in student equity achievement, which can support emergency aid, technology, and transportation, and also guaranteed income programs. And then we also want to look at some additional support as late to supporting students and guaranteed income programs for formal and cross-rated students, EOPS and CARE, Cowworks, and also CalFresh eligible students. And then also, we want to continue the conversation with our state legislators regards to financial aid and the total cost of attendance. And so these are our talking points that we want to share with the board. And I do want to, I think we should add some point in there about strong workforce. And because that program was not provided to eight point one three percent COLA. And we have a lot of strong workforce programs on our campus that will not receive additional funds according to this right now with the state, the governor's budget. And that is the legislative priorities. Is there any correction, changes, or additions that the board would like to make?
Trustee Lopez?
No, nothing to report. Nothing to edit, I should say.
Oh, okay.
I don't have nothing to say.
Okay. Trustee Ramos?
No, I I enjoy the the documents. It's fine.
I can't wait to get there. Trustee Doplemore?
I'm sorry, just one, just one thing I I would like to add on like page two. Where we asked, it's the first bullet item on page on page two of that where we talk about the support to the different students, just just a suggestion to add to the verbiage of that. It's to add a veterans, foster youth, or AV five forty undocumented students. And also, you know, maybe putting it, I know, you know, it's just to kind of cover it all. But if we can have BIPOC to be included in as well, that kind of covers the entire gamut. Black, Indigenous, and people of color. And so if we could just add that verbiage in there as well.
Regards to the
The other type of students, how you describe the students, if we could just expand.
Come up with a guarantee income?
No, it's, oh shit, it's happening. Why am I restarting?
I come up with a bullet under financial
EOPS, the first bullet point that you have on page two.
Yeah, so what the the reason why that was done that way is because we've been looking at how to expand guaranteed income programs. And so if you look at the work we've been doing in EOPS and CARE and Cowworks, those dollars were utilized from the American Rescue Plan dollars. And those dollars have run out on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And the reason why we add it for incarcerated students is because we've been having conversations about the informing incarcerated students population. And those students are in our programs and looking at what it might look like and work with a foundation of what it might look like to provide guaranteed income support for those students. And so we're being, we're just being strategic regards to if we were to expand, these would be the areas that we were to expand to. And I think trustee Doplemore, for for future expansion, we could look at those other groups. But I don't know if we have the capacity to be able to expand the program to to those additional groups that you just mentioned.
If we could just add it, maybe if we could just expanding
If we could expand it like in the future to have the the language or the definition or like when we're referring to the type of students that we serve, if we could just expand it out a little bit further. I think what this will do is this will also open us up to additional grant funding because I know that there's some grants too that we're also applying for. But just to open it up and expand it, I think that would increase some of our possibilities. So if it is suggested to move it for future, then I'm I'm okay with that as well.
My recommendation is to move it for future because you want to continue to expand. But I will make sure I get back to staff and also provide updates to the board of how we want to expand guaranteed income.
Thank you.
So, Board President Calhoun, if the board could take action on the the legislative talking points. And then the only correction would be to, when we look at the it'd be a motion to approve the legislative priorities for twenty twenty-three. And the only correction would be to add in a bullet regards to cost of living adjustment for the categorical programs, particularly strong workforce. And that would be the correction. And then we'll also have a note to take into account for future expansion of the guaranteed income program as mentioned by trustee Doplemore.
Okay, may I have a motion on everything what he just said?
So move. So move.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Yes, I would like the second, please.
All right. Any discussion? No discussion? Maybe we have electronic vote, please.
Have a joke, brother.
Can I get a verbal vote from trustee Carnes? It came up? Oh, okay, I don't see it. Okay, trustee Dopplemore?
Um, aye.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Dr. Curry?
Yeah, so the other item that we have is regards to the, the meetings. If, Heather, can you pull that up for me, please? So we have meeting scheduled for Monday, January thirtieth. And we just want to go over and make sure everybody's okay with this. I do know I have to check flights, and I'll be doing that on Thursday when Catalina's in. But I just want to let everyone know this is where we're at regards to our meeting schedule. And the only meeting we don't have a confirmed time is with the speaker, Anthony Rinden. Is everybody okay with the schedule? I don't need a motion, I just want to make sure everyone's okay, if there's any changes. If anybody else want to go switch out, who's going to be at what meeting, just to get some direction from the board.
This is Lopez. Depending on my return flight, there might be a conflict on one of the assigned timeframes. But I think once you provide that information, I'll let you know of the conflict for me.
Well, I have a question. So, so, Chalun and Ronald is from three thirty, and so is Lopez and Dopplemore, even though we're seeing somebody different. Who's going to be with who?
We, we don't have a schedule, as I mentioned, we don't have a scheduled time for Rinden yet, and so it's, it's not confirmed.
Oh, there's no time yet? Oh, okay. I'm sorry, thank you. I just thought, even though it wasn't there, it was for the same time. Okay. Thank you. You need a motion?
No. But is everyone okay with the meeting times? But also too, from the one thirty to two o'clock meeting, if anybody else would like to go with word president, Kahuna and myself, we have one slide available. And then also Senator Stephen Bradford, from twelve forty-five to one fifteen, we do have another slide available. If anyone on the board members would like to attend, please let us know.
I'll go to Senator Bradford's.
Thank you.
I could do the California Department of Finance at one thirty. The one thirty? He said that there was two, two, right? So if he does Bradford, I could do the Department of Finance.
Perfect. We'll make that adjustment. And then trustee Kahuna, do you want to talk about the four to six?
Oh, from four to six. From four to six, the California Community College Board Members of the African American Caucus, we are having an event at the California Museum, which is right down the street from Assemblyman Giffen's location, or is across the street. And we are going to be honoring some legislators. We're going to be honoring Dr. Shirley Weber with her things in education that she does. We're going to be doing Assemblyman Chris Holden, where his AB two eighty-eight for dual endorsement. We're doing Pamela Haynes from the governor's office, and she's lost reels.
Yes.
She's also lost reels, board member. And then we have Linda Handy from Farolta. And then we're also honoring a former board member, Dr. DeBor LeBlanc, because she's the one that started the African American Caucus when she was a board member, and this college was in receivership. And she had the foresight and the insight to start the African American Caucus. So we're honoring her, and it's from four to six. And I hope everyone can understand about the flight arrangement and having to leave, I understand that. So thank you. We're at item, no, we have to
Can I make one statement, just to make sure that the student trustee will be able to attend all the meetings? And so just, if you're okay with that, student trustee, we can add you to every one of the meetings, and you could be with me along with the board of trustees. Because they love to hear the students' voices.
I don't have a problem being there, but my flight allows me to leave at two forty-five on that day.
So we'll be talking to you this week about your schedule and your flight.
So you'll be at two of the meetings, and so you'll, you'll be leaving like at eleven thirty to go to the airport? No? What happened? Did your flight leave? My flight is about two thirty-five. I mean, she can come down, I don't know if I'm staying long, but Catalina made, Catalina made the flight?
Yeah, and, and it's, the student trustee and I talked this past week about the schedule, as Kevin has been out, but I will have the information by Thursday, so I'll resolve the flight issue to make sure that she's able to attend. So we'll resolve that.
I, I just want to make a comment that I would hope she could attend the meetings with the actual legislators, legislators, because they really appreciate the student, the student voice.
They do. Got it. They want their opinion and what you think, and what do you think the student needs and all like that. All right, Dr. Curry?
Yes. So let me move to the next item, which we have the update on our full-time equivalent of students. In your packet, you have, actually, you have received it in here, you have an update on student enrollment. But you get the data of where we're at. I, I'm really, I'm really impressed with our numbers for, right now, for winter and also for spring. So if you look at the, the attachment for winter, as we looked at it last week, we were up by seventeen point three percent. And for spring, as of today, we're up by, I don't have the number, pardon me, I had it earlier. Give me one second. Thank you. And for spring, we're up eleven point nine percent. And we still have a lot more work to do for spring, but I was really impressed with the numbers and the increase over this past weekend.
Trustee Lopez?
No discussion.
No discussion?
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore?
Um, yes, Dr. Curry, if you could, if you could just restate of the increase in enrollment for winter?
The winter as of last week, I'm sorry, my computer's it's gone, it's just Sarah, can you read the number for me? I just can't get into it again. Let me just figure out what's going on here.
The FTS number?
The FTS for winter, the percentage.
Twenty percent compared to last year and up two point eight percent compared to two years ago.
So just to state that the enrollment for both winter and for spring, and this is projected for this spring, right?
Correct.
We're both trending up on both of those quarters, correct?
Correct.
For the current year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Right. Next item, Dr. Curry.
The next item is the trustee fellowship. I just want to provide the board with the update on trustee fellowship. At the Board of Trustees Retreat in December, the board drafted a policy for diversity, equity, inclusion, and access, which is, will be a new board policy, it'd be a replacement of board policy seventeen, seventy-one hundred. So we put the new policy there that was drafted by the board. We're, we're going to start taking that through the process to get people's feedback, unless the board has any questions about that tonight. Also too, on your desk, on the table, you have the books that were purchased from the trustee fellowship grant. And then we're also going to be moving forward with getting dates from Dr. Bryant, Bryant Marks, to finally try to do this implicit bias training for the board of trustees. And I'll be sending an email out to the board tomorrow to see your availability for this training. And that concludes that item.
Item sixteen.
Discussion, I'm sorry, if I may.
Discussion.
Chair, please. On item fifteen oh three, it's on one of the pages, it's, it's on the bottom of page one, it's the Hold on a second, I have to open it up, destroy it. It's on the attachment, Board Policy Seventy-one zero zero, Diversity. It's the one that's dated January seventeen twenty-three. I know that there was some changes, but on page two, um, the, hold on a second, I'm going to look at my notes. It's the bottom of the paragraph, and it's just like with, really with the naming convention. I know we changed it and we added accessibility, but accessibility is not included in that paragraph. If we can have, if we can add that, I'm sorry.
In the, the second pair, the, the last, the second, the, the last paragraph?
Uh huh, page one.
Okay, I see it. I don't have no problems doing that. It's just, it's a draft, so I can just make the change.
Yeah, yeah.
And share that out.
Yeah, but all of them, because we made it with all of the, the changes, and, and it was just an oversight on it, just to add accessibility into that, into the bottom of the first page. Go up?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. That's all, that's all I have, chair.
Item sixteen, grant item?
Actually, there's one more trustee.
Is it?
Yeah, this trustee fellowship. So as a follow-up to our, our many conversations, we talked about the leading and lagging indicators. I just want to bring a couple of things to your, to, to the attention. One is, we want to talk about student persistence tonight, and Lauren has a quick presentation that we'll talk about. But we also have, I want to make sure that you got a copy of the California Community College roadmap. That was a part of the governor's proposal for funding for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. And the record, and these, and these, and the roadmap has been the guide regards to the goals for the California community colleges. And so I want to make sure I bring that to attention to the board, is that we have to start aligning our goals to the roadmap goals. And that's something we'll be working on for the next couple of months, to really align our goals to the roadmap goals. So I want you to know that, but then also to talk about leading and lagging indicators. So each month, we'll be having a conversation with the board of trustees about some type of leading and lagging indicators. So today, we want to talk about student persistence. Lauren, and Heather's the first slide, first presentation.
Great. Hello, is this working? Yeah, okay. Good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Lauren Sosinko. I'm the Director of Institutional Effectiveness at Compton College. And tonight, I'm going to be talking about the leading and lagging indicators with a focus on persistence. Some of these slides you've seen before, I'm going to go through them rather quickly. So just let me know if you have any questions, but so we're using leading and lagging indicators as these concepts that we borrowed from economics and applying them to our educational outcomes. And really what they're trying to help us do is focus in on a lagging indicator is sort of where you end up. But a leading indicator is helping predict that lagging indicator. And, and working with leading indicators, really, it's more actionable, and you're able to use the data in more impactful ways. Next slide, please. So when we think about leading and lagging indicators, think about the, the leading, or lagging indicators are our big goals, it's the end of the race, it's the finish line. And leading indicators are all of those things that are related to the lagging indicators, but they happen before. And so in that way, that we have more control over them, and we can try and make change so that it changes the leading indicator, which in turn will then change the lagging indicator. And again, it's just my very rudimentary drawing here of that, that finish line. Again, reinforcing this idea of lagging is where, where we end up. But the leading is before the finish line, and there's time there to influence the outcome. Next slide, please. So now, quickly looking at our persistence data, these data are pulled from our institutional set goals. We have four data points here from two thousand seventeen eighteen, eighteen nineteen, nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one. And our persistence indicator are those students who are enrolled in fall, how many enroll again in the next spring? And you see across that four-year period, we have had a pretty flat persistence rate. It's been pretty stubbornly flat. The count below the percentage shows you the raw number of students. So you can see, even though the percentage is flat, we actually see a little bit of decline in the number of students who persist. And that's due to our enrollment decline that we experienced when we became independent, and also because of COVID. We do have an established goal of sixty percent, and you can see that we, we haven't gotten there. And so that's, this is our finish line. This is our, the persistence of from fall to spring is the finish line. So now the idea is, okay, how, what do we do, what do we look at to figure out how to move this persistence rate? So we, we have a lot of different data that we have been exploring and trying to identify what are other leading indicators that can help us understand how to make better change to improve persistence. One of the research analysts in institutional effectiveness, George Diaz, has been working on a predictive model, a sophisticated analysis. He puts a lot of different variable, leading indicators into the model, and tries to figure out what makes a difference. And what he's found is that whether a student is full or part-time makes a difference in whether they persist. And the leading indicator that he's been able to identify so far is for first-time students who come into Compton College, if they don't earn any successful grades in their first term, they are much less likely to persist. So it's sort of logical, but then that helps us identify, okay, this is a student population that we really want to focus on, to try and connect those students to resources, to academic supports, to try and help them be successful in their first term. So we've taken this data, and we have disaggregated it. Next slide, please. And we are, are looking at persistence among our male and female students, and we see that there is a difference. Our male students are persisting at a lower rate than our female students. We also look, disaggregated this by ethnicity. Next slide, please. And we see, pulling out our, our two largest race, racial ethnicity groups, our Latino, Latina, Latinx students, and our Black or African-American students. We see that between those We see that between those two groups, especially our Black and African-American students are persisting at lower rates than the other students. With this exception of that two thousand nineteen twenty um, year, there, there was an increase to fifty nine percent. So um again, looking at this lagging data, trying to figure out what are the leading indicators um, and exploring those data more is, is something that we're constantly doing. The other thing that we're doing is really trying to use this data in what, some of our major initiatives. So this, this is a North Star of our guided pathways work, so our guided pathways committee looks at this persistence data to try and understand how our success teams can help students persist. Um, it's something that we reflected on in our recently approved equity plan and created target groups around um, persistence for both our Black or African-American and our Latino, Latino, Latinx students. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Is there any trustee, trustee Lopez? Student trustee Collins?
I don't have no questions.
Trustee Ramos?
No, thank you for the presentation.
Trustee Doppler Moore?
Yes, I just have one question. I promise I'll be brief. Um, the information for um uh, twenty one, twenty two, wait, I'm sorry, I think I'm jumping ahead, I'm sorry. Uh, on the presentation, um, I would say, no, I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't wanna go ahead, I was onto something else, my apology. You wanna add it now? Oh, she's not? Uh, okay, um, so I'm actually, I'm looking at the persistence. Um, the evaluation of institution set goals, like for fall twenty two. Thank you, Heather. Um, down to, or just the um, page, some of the other um, pages, the information or the data for, for twenty one, twenty two. Uh, and when do you anticipate that we will have that information, maybe the closeout of the, of the, of the semester? Okay. So that's a lagging, right? See, okay, I, I, I got it. We can hear you.
Um, so a- again, as soon as it's available from Calpass Plus, we will, we will populate those cells. But we do this report once a year, um, but I can also let you know, you know, if it posts before we're, we do this again in next November.
Okay, thank you so very much. That's all I have, chair.
I have no questions. Thank you for your report. Grant items. Sixteen oh one administrative services grants. Thank you. May I have a motion?
So move.
I haven't did this, I, I haven't did discussion here, cuz there's not a second.
I, I can second sixteen point zero one, correct? Yes, I could second that motion.
All right, Lopez second, now discussion. Nobody else have a meeting? Everybody says.
I'm sorry, my fault. I have discussion on um I have discussion on the Pfizer grant sixteen point one. The amount of the, um, the amount of the grant. What is the total amount of the grant?
Sixty thousand dollars. Sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, in the uh, in the top portion here, in like this um, state of the letter, where it says seventy five thousand, is that an error? Or is it something that we need to revise?
Yeah, it needs to be revised, you, you caught something. The, the total amount is seventy five thousand dollars, the, the, Jenna Adams should've said seventy five thousand. No, I'm sorry, the award letter says sixty thousand dollars, sorry, we got it right?
But in here, in the, in the first paragraph.
That's the letter that we sent to them asking for funding. However, the grant award from the vendor was sixty thousand dollars. If you look at the, the first page, it has that at the top. So we asked for seventy five thousand dollars, but we were awarded sixty thousand.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. And that's all I have, chair.
Right, now we have the roll call, either try and vote for the grant item. Does it pop up for you?
No.
It's longer.
What was that doing? Yes, can you just do a verbal? Yes.
Aye. Yeah, that's a unanimous yes vote.
Thank you. Item seventeen, board policies and administr, nope, sixteen oh two. All right, uh trustee Lopez is excused, being excused from this one due to the fact that she works for the county of Los Angeles, is that correct? Okay. Sixteen oh two administrative services grant. County Los Angeles, California tutoring mentoring program, program number H dash seven one zero zero one four. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second, second.
Motion by Ramos, second by Doppler Moore, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, may we please have a electronic vote?
No, no. Aye, online, if it's not coming up.
Okay. It should be there.
You need to relog in.
I'll take the verbal.
Aye.
Item seventeen.
The motion carries.
Oh, motion carry, okay, thank you. Item seventeen, board policies and administrative regulations.
Trustee Calhoun, this is just a update, these are the updated board policies and administrative regulations. If any board members have any questions or concerns, please let me know, but I do wanna say thank you to the staff uh, and the faculty that are working on board policies, and you have a copy of the board policies and administrative regulations review schedule, and we're right on schedule with the items that we have.
This can be done as a whole?
There's no, there's no vote, there's just information items.
No discussion needed. I made sure. Item eighteen?
So item eighteen, I just wanna, just to highlight a couple items here. Item eighteen point one zero is an update on a semi-bill seven oh five and also seventeen oh five regards to equal placement of our students in transfer level English and math, and give you a sense of where we're at. Uh, one of these that we're working on is a response to a letter we received from public advocates regards to our AB seven oh five and AB seventeen oh five implementation. And our goal is to get the letter to them uh, in the next couple of weeks. But I'm really excited about the work that we're doing in AB seven oh five and also now seventeen oh five. Also, I do wanna highlight uh, for you eighteen point one seven. Which we have our performance letter for our other post-employee benefits uh, liability, and then also our Persis Stirs Trust. So this gives you a sense of where we're at regards to investments. Uh, even though the market was down for most of the year, uh, we're, we're still, we're not in the negative regards to what's in our trust uh, in our funds, but this, the, this last couple of weeks, the market's been doing fairly well. And so I'm hopeful that the strategy that we have with our investors, that our OPEB and our Persis Stirs will increase uh, based off, cuz we bought low and we're expecting to go high as it relates to that. So I'm excited about that, but always nervous as well. Uh, the other item I wanted to share with you too, this is new for the Board of Trustees, we put an information item, just so you know. Uh, we had a, our, our higher education emergency relief fund, our, our quarterly report was due on January tenth. And so we included a copy of that for the Board of Trustees, and it's all, it's already posted on our website for the community and public. But we thought it'd be good to share that with the Board of Trustees, so you have a, a sense of what we're doing with those dollars. And the final one I want to uh, just to highlight is a legislative update. I think it's very important, item eighteen, eighteen point two five, is to really look at the uh, legislation that was chaptered. It's very fascinating regards to the bills that were passed and how uh, some of these bills have to be implemented on our campuses. And so I just wanna make sure that you see a copy of what's chaptered and what goes into effect beginning on January one, twenty twenty three. And so that's included as a part of the boarding in the packet. And that's the, and that's the information items.
Okay, we have. Item nineteen, future agenda items?
So the next item that we're gonna move forward with is the uh, the bond audits, financial and uh, performance audits. Uh, we have a presentation on the STEM Center. Uh, this is a good time to have the STEM Center present because we're receiving additional funds from the uh, California Community College Chancellors Office to begin our Mesa Program. So you'll see a transition from the word STEM into the Mesa Program, and we'll be able to provide you an update of what we're doing in that area. We're also gonna be able to provide you an update on the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four uh, state budget. Uh, tomorrow, Dr. Nasser and I are participating in a workshop put on by the California Community College Chancellors Office, uh, the Association of Community College Administrators, and also the Association for Community College Business Officers. They have a workshop tomorrow afternoon, so we have more information on the budget, and we'll provide that to the Board of Trustees. We also have an update on the nursing program and also another update as well as to the enrollment management plan at Compton College. And that concludes the futures and the items.
All right, we're at item twenty, before I go to twenty, anybody having questions? No, moving along, item twenty, oral reports.
So, uh, I will be brief as possible. Uh, first thing I, I wanna say, thank you to the the faculty, staff, and administrators who participated on the Marley King Junior, I'm sorry, and student trustee who participated on the planning committee for the Marley King Junior Celebration that happened yesterday here at Compton College in the student lounge in the multipurpose center. Uh, I'm really excited about what happened yesterday because it's our first annual, but the staff are the ones who put all the work together to make that happen. And I thought it was a really nice event, and I think people had a really good time. We received some feedback uh, regards to the event, so next year we'll make it better as we move forward. But as our first event for uh, to celebrate Marley King Junior, I thought it went very well. So thank you to everyone that's involved in, uh, that has been involved in that. And the next thing I wanna say is that on February ninth, we have our Spring's Professional Development Day, uh, which will be online. Our keynote speaker is Eric Felix, he is a, Dr. Eric Felix is a professor at Settler State University who does a lot of work regards to student equity, student equity plans, and the implementation of those student equity plans. So he is our keynote speaker, and then we'll do some workshops about inclusion. And so we're gonna have some of our groups that are doing work on campus, such as Males of Color, LGBTQ plus group. Just bringing them in to do presentations about the work that they're doing and sharing with the faculty, staff what they're doing, so we can be able to get more participation. But also just to give them information about what we're doing, and I, we think that's important. So that's what we have scheduled for February the ninth, and that concludes my report.
Maybe we have a, from student trustee Collins, we neglected to get your report in the very beginning, so I would like to get it there.
Thank you, but I actually don't have a report today.
Okay. Trustee Lopez?
I hope everyone enjoyed their MLK Day. Uh, thank you for today's presentation um, on my plaque, and um I hope everyone has a great weekend.
Okay, trustee Ramos?
I just wanna thank everyone that was involved in making um, the MLK um, breakfast celebration happen. I thought it was a great event, and yeah, thank you.
Trustee Doppler Moore?
Yes, again, thank you to the planning committee, um, really had a great time coming out for our inaugural um, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior um, celebration breakfast on campus. That was very exciting, I really um, enjoyed myself, and I enjoyed the keynote speaker as well. Um, just one final note as a reminder, I would like to say, um, as we close out the month of January, um, the month of February is a, um, is a short month, um, Black, um, Black History Month. But just a reminder that the priority um, deadline of March second is approaching for financial aid. And I know we also have the September, that we have the September deadline at the community college level. But just keeping um, in mind that um, um, funding um, applying for college is a major and it's a huge barrier. There is um, a significant amount of money that is in the governor's budget for education, and we need to continue that conversation so that our students are tapping into all those financial resources. Thank you, that is all I have.
Okay, so um the farmer's market, I'm, I'm gonna make it, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to make it. Um, but I'd like to see, you, you know, around our, the gate, like at um Artesia Santa Fe, we have like a banner there about uh, students and classes, right? So I don't see much advertising around the college about the farmer's market. We have a county office right on the next corner. And I think if they saw a banner promoting the farmer's market and that they, do they accept EBT, Dr. Curry?
Calp, yes, Calp.
Calp, and if they see that, and they're there on Wednesday, even though it's late, at least they know that uh, there's a farmer's market over here on Compton College, and where is that? Because you have directions? Do you have things out there that say farmer's market this way? Okay, so I think if we could put something at Artesia Santa Fe, Greenleaf and Santa Fe, where they all put those, you know, signs when we run for office, they put the signs on all of the gates and stuff like that, and maybe if we could have something on the outside of the gate at the entrance of this entrance and that entrance, just something.
We already have that entrance, but we, we, we already have the front entrance and the back.
I, I must be looking at the wrong place.
No, it's right there between the palm trees in the front, and then also the back, but, but we could look at.
On the palm tree, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's connected. You, you actually.
Okay, but we have nothing on the corner.
I don't know, but I put that as a note to follow up.
No, I just saw.
I know.
Well, I didn't see the other one, so I might not have saw that either, so let me back that up. And then maybe, if you could do flyers, cuz I think you got flyers in English or Spanish, take them over to the uh county office, right? And what about the DMV? Take them over to the DMV, see if they will let you uh, post it someplace about the farmer's market, you know, every Wednesday. Lot of people in the DMV. Um esports, I, I asked about this once before. The esports, where the building is at, where is that, right? What type of events do they have? I mean, uh, cuz I was given ideas about events to have, uh, cuz a lot of students and uh not just students, but the general community, they're into all those gaming things and using those. And I just thought about, maybe we could use that, and there's a fee or whatever, I don't know, but something where, is it just for us, is not for the community? I'm asking, I don't know.
We will follow back up with you on that request.
Yeah, because that's a lot, I mean, just sitting there, you're gonna follow back up, that's fine. Uh, I think I've already asked to put on the agenda about the board meetings for Tuesday, so that we could discuss it. I don't know if everybody knows, but that bridge will not be worked on until twenty twenty four. Unacceptable. Twenty twenty four, this is twenty. Twenty twenty-four, this is twenty. This is, it doesn't just affect the student, it affects the entire community, the buses, everything. And so, we got the update twenty twenty-four for that bridge. I can let everybody know that. That, the first annual MLK breakfast, oh my goodness. Thank you, thank you, thank you, faculty, staff, classified, the planning committee. Everybody, thank you for having the first annual MLK breakfast. I can't wait for the second annual MLK breakfast. And I must say, you saved me, because I usually get up at five o'clock in the morning. And drive all the way to Crenshaw and King and Park, because they have a Labor Day breakfast at eight o'clock. But you need to get there early because the traffic officer shut down the street and you be zigzagging trying to get through. So thank you, y'all saved me. You you didn't save trustee uh Lopez, so. Well, she managed it, she managed it, and uh so thank you for that, so. You guys have given me a different place to go, right here at our college. Thank you. Oh, and um. Special trustee, Dr. Fowler? You have nothing to say? You just sat out there and out audience, huh? Okay. Well. Well, no, we only want to give you three minutes, that's it. Three seconds, okay. All right, maybe one time you'll have something to say like, let. Well, thank you for that. Uh the next regular scheduled board meeting is um closed sessions at five and that's February the twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Open session begins at six. Is there a motion to adjourn? I know, I just wanted to go through to see if I needed. This meeting is over at eight oh eight PM. Thank you, everyone.